My name is Suzanne Block, my address is 1800 Hyperport Stillwater. Well, we have been at St. Clair Prep since the year after it opened and I now have an eighth grader and tenth grader at St. Clair Prep. And as the board has recognized, the school has, is crossing the chasm and in doing so is learning what is, what is, they are doing that is working and what is not working. This is common for any new school, nonprofit or for-profit business. Back when I attended the informational session, mention of upper echelon schools was not part of the presentation, it may have changed. It was the character and leadership development, the uniforms, the small school size, and the classical learning theory that attracted us to the school. As a matter of fact, we had made a really tough decision after attending that on whether we were going to go to St. Clair Prep or Stillwater, simply because we knew it would be difficult to get our kids into St. Clair Prep in the upper schools. So we made that decision early on because we wanted that smaller high school environment for our kids. One area that I would like to see further change made is on the quantity versus quality of homework given in the middle school. I feel this is where we lose many of our bright students. Many families have chosen to find a better homeschool balance than they were getting at St. Clair Prep. And these are good students from good families who we have gotten to know at St. Clair Prep. As a matter of fact, although I mentioned the reasons that we chose St. Clair Prep, I must also say that community is one of the most important things for us now here at St. Clair Prep. Sadly however, we are losing some of our original community. I think about the classical learning theory, the K through four memorization, the five through eight application, nine through twelve rhetoric, and how this is presented in our school's informational sessions, or at least I'm under the impression that that's still part of the presentation. Yet I took some time to look at the class of 2018, which is the class my son will be in. It's the second class to start at St. Clair Prep kindergarten, so they will be the second class that goes through the K through twelve, for two minutes or three? I'm sorry. Okay.
Take another minute and please.
Alright, thanks, I will. I began to look at those who started K and who are currently in 10th grade with my son and was shocked to see that 50% of them have left. I also evaluated the class of 2020, and the same holds true for that class. So, being integrated into the school, I've talked to those families who have left and most of them that I know that I've talked to have left because of the amount of homework in middle school. If we can adjust that level to, so that we can retain those kids who have that lower school knowledge, I think we can sell the classical learning theory is still something that is a great part of St. Clair Prep. But until then, I suggest that until we get more than 50% of those kids to stay, then it might be misleading in the recruiting of those parents who want their kids to experience that learning style. Sorry for going over and thank you.
Thank you Suzanne.
Hi, my name is John Strattman, my address is 1625 Oak Green Avenue North. I'm new to this process, I've been coming to the board meetings as often as I can this year, so I appreciate everything that the board does. So I've been doing a lot of reading, going back over, over some of the documents, just trying to educate myself, especially in case I run for the board or something like that in the future. But I was, I was looking at the, at the annual report, 2013, 2014 sections, and that was reviewed and approved on the 21st of October, and then presented to the board on the board meeting of September 15th, and then reviewed and approved there. But the documents have two different, two different titles. The title of the annual report on the September board meeting is the 2014-15 annual report, and that's not available. The, the other big, the other biggest change is that even though the documents appear to be very similar, the executive director's job description is different in both of them, specifically section seven, which, which has been removed on the annual report that was approved by the board on September 15th. Both documents have the same date as being generated on those, but there's, there, section seven has been removed on the later document that was approved by the board on September 15th. And I was just wondering why that happened. Thanks.
We'll look into it. I'm not sure if I believe we just approved, is this the one we just approved, John?
Correct, yes.
I believe that was the 2016 annual report.
I think they are two different documents, but let's have the conversation offline and I welcome a face-to-face conversation, John, or I know Kelly will, and, and we can clarify any questions you have.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, John and Suzanne, and back to Kelly.
Okay. I would like to start out with reviewing our annual audit. Our audit report is complete and reviewed as we do each year, Cliff and Larsen Allen, I'm Suzanne, and Lucas is our in charge guy on his, like, not for Dennis, but we all have Dennis.
Of course, sorry if you can't place Dennis.
Lucas has done a great job for us and maybe not crazy, but we're all very excited. So, Lucas, I'll name it over to you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you Kelly and Christine, I'm lucky I noticed all the other EKDA and school staff to put time and efforts into this item, it went very well. If you guys have the, the audit reports and the ES in front of you, I just want to go to page two of the factoring, so to find our, our opinion letter or our audit report letter. It is unmodified, which is a clean audit page, it's good. One unique thing you notice in there, if you go to page three, which is the second page of the letter, there's emphasis on the matter paragraph in there. And that's just describing that there is a quote, your statement that stated, the statement prior to net position is a implementation of a new government accounting standard that leads to pensions, and I'll talk, just a little bit more about that later if we can. If you keep paging through the factoring to come to the management discussion analysis, I think if you have a spare in the facting, so the page five, sort of, five through fifteen, if you have a spare 10 minutes, if you have anything else, I'd say the management discussion analysis is a good, good part of the facting to take a look at, gives you a good overview, and it's where the management gets their chance to kind of voice what happens this school this year, and, and if there's some explanations of changes and fund balances and everything, special issues there. In the facting, if you go on to page 16, I know Dennis normally doesn't talk about the statement of net position, but this year, related to that emphasis paragraph in the letter, I thought I'd bring it up. You know, some new items in there, there's some deferred outflows of resources and some deferred inflows, and your long-term debt increased quite a bit, and that's related to GASB 68 and 71. And if you wanted to learn some more about that, you can go to note eight, and basically the school had to recognize its proportionate share of the net pension liability for, for PRA and TRA, and it was allocated based off of the school's proportionate share of the contributions that you guys paid, and I'm sure Kelly could explain more on that, if you guys have more questions there, I can explain that.
We can do an in-service on that next week, for next month, if you'd like. GASB is general accounting, general accepted.
Standards board.
Accounting standards board, and so it's a, it's a requirement for a public audit to comply with GASB standards, so every school district is facing this larger adjustment to their balance sheet, showing a liability.
Yep, yeah, you'll notice that, yeah, you have a deficit unrestricted net position, but your fund balances are still very strong when you go to the fund level. And you can see that if you go to page 18, with your balance sheet, so now we're back to all the long-term debt, and you're back to your fund level, modified accrual basis.
Which is what you're used to seeing, on a monthly basis.
And we'll see that, you know, this is just a snapshot, what we do each year, the donkey does on June 30th, and you can see you have very strong fund balance and cash. If there's any questions there, I can expand with, it's good to know you guys have strong fund balance. You can see that more when you go to page 20, which is your statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. And you can see your ending fund balance in your general fund, which is a good indicator of financial health of the school. You had 22.7% in fund balance of your total expenditures for the year, which is actually an increase prior year, which had 20.2%, so that's good to see. We keep paging through, there's a budget to actual on page 22 for the general fund. On here, you can do the budget very well for revenues, you're within 0.1% of revenues, so 14.6,000 out of 11.7 million, it's pretty, pretty good.
When you amend your budget in May.
Exactly, so we would, right, yeah. So if you keep doing that going forward, yeah, and expenditures are, I think they are within 1.7% and overall you had a higher increase in fund balance than expected, but going forward, we always recommend that the board considers any variances and tries to keep them within 1.2% like you guys already are doing. So just continue doing that going forward. And it's worth looking at pages 23 and 24, your budget to actual statements for your food service program, your community service fund. Both of them did well enough this year where we didn't need any permanent transfers, if I remember it right.
Subsidies.
Yep, yep. So that should see most, I'd say most charter schools, the general fund has to subsidize their food service program or community service program. So it's going through, okay. If you wanted to go to page 68, this is a UFR compliance table. The first column, you'll notice that's the audit numbers, and the second one are the numbers that have been uploaded to UFRs by your finance staff, and then.
I'm probably UFR, I'm sorry.
Oh, unified.
It's UFR.
So it's Unified Financial for County Reporting Standards. So you guys, might know this, might not, that you guys are, the coding has to be uniform throughout schools and state, and then this upload has to be done by June 30th and, or sorry, by, by November 30th or June 30th, 15th. You guys met that requirement at that deadline, and you notice there's, maybe you'll, they allow you to have, I think it's up to $5 rounding differences, and that third column you have a couple $1 rounding differences in there, and that's fine.
This is what we upload to MDE.
Exactly. Yeah, and stop me if you have any questions, I might keep breathing over stuff.
No, just.
Yeah? And then if you go to page 69, this is your internal control letter, required by Yellow Book Audit Standards, there is no issues. Again, you guys have, if we did have any, if there's any control issues, any material weaknesses, just get the conditions, we go to the sole concern, there's none, which is good.
Sorry, I have a question. You don't audit for internal controls per se, you audit for internal controls as the basis of making your audit procedures.
Right, we, in Yellow Book Audit, we make sure that they're properly implemented, but we don't make sure that they're, if there's a single audit, we would actually do tests of controls, again, make sure that they're carried out properly.
If that's not a common practice for public schools and charter schools, I would think to audit for internal controls?
If you had federal expenditures this year over $500,000, we wouldn't have done that, required by a single audit, and that's going over, up to $750,000 next year, so it's a couple that can happen in the near future. And then if you go on, just the last letter in there is your local compliance letter. And you'll notice there is bond finding this year, it's very common for charter schools to have local compliance findings. Probably the most common one is, you know, not paying your voices, but then there's a 35-day standard. You guys didn't have that issue, but there, you had the second most common, which is a collateral requirement, you have to be collateralized for 110% of, of deposits or 100% if you have a irrevocable letter of credit. And actually, you guys are covered as of June 30th, you test as of June 30th and December 31st, and as of December 31st, you're just a little over, probably due to the timings of deposits or.
I, I did talk to the board about this earlier in this year, as you might recall, and it was a discrepancy between the pledge report that I was getting from our bank, our depository, to what was actually on, what was pledged at US Bank, is that word, depository as I think?
Right.
So, the bank misrepresented what was being held, and actually, one was double pledged, so the original.
And, and it's probably, it's going to resolve?
It's definitely going to resolve, and so now I'm getting an actual source document from US Bank to alleviate that from happening.
So going forward, yeah, and it's a common finding, it happens, a lot of times it's timing differences that cause it, and that issues with the board.
You get a big deposit at the end of, on your idea of payment at the end of the month, and it takes a few days to pledge if you aren't, but usually I'm on it, because I know that you have to do tests on those days, to be honest.
Right, yeah, right, same here.
It was, it was a mistake on our bank's part that they corrected.
And then, I guess, just summarize what you have in your executive audit summary here. The first portion, we talked about the audit findings and results, and it's pretty much right this one over there. There's some good historical trends in the tables that call that, that, that's time, that I'm here to look at. You can see, you know, with your, it's about 3% increase in ADMs this year, it's increases in revenues, and then the related increases in expenditures. The next section, there's a, a 3% increase here for legislative activity, and then you'll notice, you know, there's some changes in specialized there, that your, and the pay for 10% of your tuition billings here was before, it was 100% of your charges were reimbursed. Some minor changes like that in there. And then the last is just our, our formal required communications, this is where, you know, if you ran into any issue, any disagreement with management, or, or an issue completely got it, it'd be disclosed in here, and there wasn't any, and that's, that's great, fine. You'll also, we'll also talk about your county estimates and some changes in there this year related to GASB 68 and 71 again. And that's about it, unless you guys have some questions?
I have one.
Yeah?
On page seven of the financial statements, table A1. So at the bottom of that page, it says, "Net position will increase as the debt on the bonds is paid. A significant portion of the overall negative net position amount can be attributed to accrual interest on the long-term debt and construction costs incurred in prior years." It says, that's the part about GASB, which we talked about, and it sounds like we're going to learn more about as well. So my question is, when we look under, in the table, deferred inflows, the difference in unrestricted deferred inflows from, it goes from 2.7 million to 2 million, almost 2 million to, that's definitely, what, what is that?
Okay, yes, deferred inflows, this is actually, it's, guys, it's 65.
Is, are we still going to make the basketball?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, I tried to step around that, yeah, it's, it's related to, because it's, it's all, your liability is actuarial based, so basically, if they wanted to have the data for this year, they're going to have to have this audit report to figure out your liabilities, they reach back a year. So in, since everything's back based on last year's data, there's some deferred inflows, outflows, so before, your pension expense was what you paid in a parent TRA, and now they use last year's payments, see if I make this make sense, to, so figure out your, so now you actually have real pension expense, full accrual based off from actuarial data, so la, so last year's payments are recognized this year plus some changes related to the changes in liabilities, and then you deferred this year's payments to next year, so you have a deferred outflow for current year payments to parent TRAs, deferred inflows for changes in actuarial assumptions and, and things like that.
So is it a, is it a timing issue, is it a function of GASB or is it called?
It's a, it's a, it's a function of GASB 68 and 71, but it's timing issues due to when the information's available, yeah, every, every school they look at will have the same plan, yeah.
So it's not an actual change in the financial status of the school?
No, no.
Change in the accounting rules recognize pension funding?
Exactly.
I actually have a quick question, and I don't want to delay it, on the, on the collateral issue with US Bank, does that have any practical impact on the school in the sense that we should be concerned as a board, or what is the, what is the real nature of that issue?
That, it's, it's, your statute sort of required to be collateralized, the only issue is that the bank ever, you know, defaulted, which, you know, US Bank, it's not going to happen, and then you'll get your, your funds back in a timely manner. There's really no practical issue there, unless you're banking on some smaller things that might have some issues going on.
That's, that's what I wanted to understand, just in terms of a risk perspective for the board, is that the real risk would be that US Bank would fail, and, and that we would be exposed because of the need for collateralized strike. Thank you very much.
I think it was collateralized, we had actual bonds that were held, like, for State Banking Trust, they bought 2 million dollars, and then what they do with their money is buy bonds at bigger banks, and those, or with publicly held securities, the bonds, municipalities, and they actually pledged those to us in case their deposits evaporate. And we're required by statute to have 110% of our deposit balance collateralized, or pledged by, for State Banking Trust at their holding bank.
It's just your deposits over FDIC insurance.
The good news is that there's lots of money in deposits, and then we can collateralize.
We still get 1.9 million, you were just a couple hundred thousand dollars short.
I just wanted to, to make sure that we pull on that a little bit, so we understand what the reality of it is, or what the practical situation is, and are there any other questions?
I have a question on the enrollment data, but I think that's unrelated to the audit, so if we want to move forward with approving the audit, I can hold that question, or I can ask it right now.
I spell it financial to present, but the audit is separate. If you can help out the enrollment sheet that I sent you?
Yeah.
Oh, that's very small. I'm trying to fill out everybody, you haven't seen it.
No, it's fine, I can.
So, I think what we're looking for, unless there are other questions on the audit, we need to take a vote to accept the audit. We don't approve it, we accept it as presented. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm looking for a vote to approve the audit report as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lucas. You could go watch the basketball game. Thank you very much for coming, it's been nice to have you here. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the financial review.
Okay, great. So, and the financials, we have a year to date, it's September 30th, 2015, our first quarter is finished, we prepare these in the six weeks following, so we prepare our proposed amended budget with an outlook through following the fourth quarter. I am going to ask for an amended budget after this presentation, and it's not, it's not required, it's like, it's maintenance, it's certainly cleared off until, until next month. But our enrollment has settled in, there's a bit of an adjustment, as there is many years, so, for those, this presentation, let me decide what it is to do with, approve budget, approving the amended budget. So let's start out with enrollment, that's the 11th of the 17th, you have, every good budget starts with strong enrollment. Also, if you would open up your financial package to page six of 10, the statement of revenues and expenditures. We'll talk through those two documents here. Beginning with the statement of revenues and expenditures, the second column is our adopted budget. The third column I have titled the working budget, which I would present to you as a proposed amended budget. And you'll see approved budget to working budget variance column. And the final column, there are footnotes that I'll refer to, I talked through this, just for ease of reference, so those footnotes are there. So, go back to the adopted budget column, column two, you'll see at the top, so you initially it's for 1,149 ADMs, that's students. I'm actually admitting that, if you see it, in the box to the right, it's to 1,139 students, and that's based on our actual enrollment, so if you just take a look over to the enrollment summary that I have here. By grades, I have actual 2015, budget 2016, and actual 2016, in the various categories that we track enrollment, in-state students, out-of-state students, PSEO students, shared time students, and the final bank of columns is total enrollment. And the waitlist is a handout for your references. So, back to in-state students, the original budget is 1,149, that's the number you see on, on the budget, because that is, those are the students that we generate state revenue from. Out-of-state students are private pay, so that is not reflected in this count. PSEO students, we don't count those until the end of the school year, because we don't get those dollars, so these numbers that reach from, from MDE until summer, so just conservatively, we don't even include that count in these numbers. And shared time students are there. So I've counted, between, I've counted two shared time students in the total count, so you'll see I've increased. If you go back to in-state students, from 1,149, we've actually had enrolled 1,137, and I'm projecting 1,139, and that is with the mix of PSEO and shared time students, bumping that up just a couple, and it's always a little bit more than that, so I'm comfortable with that. So I'm looking at in-state students, budget to actual, you'll see the primary drop in 10th grade, we have budgeted 91 students, we actually have 10 enrolled, and that's in large part, it comes with the adjustment. Out-of-state students is right on track for what we had projected. PSU, both students are one-off of what we projected, and shared time students are down, but they only take one or two classes, so it's not a huge dollar to factor on the budget, okay? So, that decrease in enrollment of 10 students affects a number of line items back to the statement of revenue and expenditures, and you'll see those, I'm putting up one and two, general.
Kelly, can I ask, what, what was different about this year that resulted in, in the 10, being off by 10 students? I mean, what was it about 10th graders this year, was it just?
And I'll, I'll refer to Andrew on that, I report the numbers, but I don't completely set.
Are you talking about the 10th grade class?
Yeah, yeah. It looks like there was, you know, the projection of more around 90 and closer to.
We had some.
You'll see we actually were 87.
91 to 81, right?
Yeah.
So, maybe it's. I'm looking at the one that got sent out, so if there, if this was updated in the interim, this was the one that I got by email.
I can tell you, you know, that a lot of the kids that, some kids left for, you know, during school.
It hasn't been updated, but I don't know.
Are we? I mean, I know I lost some juniors this year.
Well, I'm looking at, well, I'm just looking at the in-state students for grade 10, work shows, 2016 budget of 91, and then, I'm sorry, fiscal year 16 budget of 91, and then fiscal year 16, actual of 81.
Yeah, I'm with you. We had kids that, in the summer, we had some that, and I don't know if I get into everyone's individual experience, but I do know them, some that signed up to come here and decided not to. We get probably four to five kids, if not 10, per year that want to save a spot, and then change over the summer, too. So that can really throw us off. We can, we lost a couple to, what's it, I want to say field hockey, it's not field hockey, lacrosse, lacrosse, just, you know. And I did have kind of a discipline event that kind of resulted in a few people going in different directions as well, it kind of threw my numbers off, not in 10th grade but.
And then, just the same question for 12th grade, it looks like a budget of 86 and then actual of 79, so.
I would say that that was an increased number of PSEO kids than we anticipated. We have more. We have more kids meeting each day than we thought, well, this isn't a particularly high year of PSEO kids. And like Kelly mentioned, we don't get that funding. So it's kind of like pre-making that decision or not, you're thinking about whether we're going to do that. So that's why we do seniors and not necessarily.
What's PSEO?
Post-secondary education option, so.
The college thing?
It's the college thing.
Okay, I just didn't know that.
They go to college courses while they're in high school and the state pays for it?
Well, and I actually take, I'll plug on PSEO, they also, we lose, in K-12 funding, we lose about $29 million a year in high schools to PSEO. The top four PSA schools, you know, they're getting colleges experiences, but they're not getting classes that they couldn't take here. They just, a lot of kids want to get out there and kind of just feel that freedom and take some different things. And so, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on with that, but it's a good option for some kids.
Thank you.
Okay, and one under the waitlist, you know, according to our annual report, it's been that it's been greater than 500 every year. And now we're putting this whole waitlist of 335. Is that, you know, I just, is it concerning to the board? You know, because it's, there's going to be natural people who are going to leave. Is there a reason that that just seems so down?
I, I do know that they have went through more and again, the administrators would probably be better at talking to this point than I would be. But I know going through kindergarten.
Like kindergarten, it's once kindergarten starts, it's really hard for families to make decisions to change in the middle of a kindergarten year. And we had students who moved out of the area and we had openings. And so we went through quite a few on the waitlist of kindergarten. So we offered a spot and then they choose to keep their child right there and went through. We had openings right the week before school started and because we were starting a week earlier and people weren't ready.
There's a placeholder mentality as well about, I just want to get my spot and we're not really sure if we want to do this.
But also thinking about a waitlist and as Kelly picked off the budget, meaning what the healthy waitlist is key to the budget. This is a healthy waitlist and speaking from my experience with training and family and other boards and schools, this is a healthy waitlist. And that's the key to success. You know, a lot of charter schools are struggling with that. This is something that, another number is down, we could be looked at, it's still a very, very strong number. And in the view of where charter schools at, really.
Well, and I listened to a lot of the conversations that my office manager has with people, prospective parents who call. And they will ask how many are on the waitlist and she has to tell them. And they choose not to apply because they are 35th or 64th on the list. So we essentially could have more, but.
Some don't even realize that we get to 35.
Right.
I mean, that's the thing, they hear we're 35th on the list, but it's not unheard of that we get, we get through and are able to offer a spot at 35 or 36 or something.
The other thing that's hard is often they want, if we have an opening in middle school, they also want their siblings in. And they find out that they've got three other kids in lower school that aren't going to get in or whatever. A lot of times they don't want them split up in other schools. So then they'll turn down a spot that they might be having offered in another school.
And if we closed enrollments in high school at 90, we'd have a waiting list, a little one. But you know, I mean, and that was obviously, I think, looked to 100 in order to be more viable in high school. But I mean, we're closing in on that as well.
And at that point, it would still stand to its balance. The points you guys have discussed to date have been resistant for a number of years. We got some pretty horrific press, we went through some really hard times in the last six months. I don't know how we'll measure how that affected it. I'm frankly pleased that we weathered all of that on such a high level, such a physical with a 335 waitlist and have enrollment is strong. That's what kept me up last spring.
Well, I just think it goes back to when we had that, I think it was in our training, where your colleague person came in and said that, you know, our, we can't lose 40 students. We are going to be in financial trouble if we lose 40 students. And so, you know, that's when I'm looking at healthy wait, you know, it's like healthy wait, it's not 500. You know, it's like, I might feel a lot more comfortable if it's, if it's a waiting list on every.
I think the newness of the school plays into that too. I mean, I think just it becomes a thing that people want to be a part of. I don't know that we're going to have, I don't feel like we're going to have 500 again. You know, it'll be the people who.
Is what we define who we are more, I know it's understood in the administration and the board has spoken about it. As we further define who we are, then we're not going to attract as many people looking for something to come from. They're coming to this, and fewer people want to come to this. So hopefully it'll be a better fit and we'll be better prepared for them when they get here.
Good questions. I would just, one quick comment, that 40 students would have a material impact on the budget. But it would not mean that we're in trouble. What it would mean is that we'd actually have to start managing the budget differently. It would have a material impact on the budget. But, you know, the great good news is that we have a really strong waitlist and a really strong sound budget. So it's not something we should ignore, it's not something we shouldn't focus on. And I appreciate the question. I just focus on the difference, the distinction between being in trouble and, and having a material impact on the budget.
So overall enrollment, thank you gentlemen, and uh, before you hear comments. Overall enrollment from last year increased to 16, and that is 13,000 budget, and that's for total enrollment. So that effect is about $48,000 on state revenue that we need to reduce our projections on state revenue. That's 13,000 on the gen ed side and 16,000 on the charter school lease aid side. And also Q comp is being brought down, that is just a conservative estimate. There is more allocated, there are more demands on Q comp than there is allocation. It isn't really started out yet, so we're just pulling that down touch to be conservative. I just don't want the Q comp folks to overspend what we don't have. So maybe it'll be considered as a candidate, but it won't be in the whole. So that sums $48,000 in reduced, reduced state revenue. Also, we're projecting $55,000 increase in state revenue just based on you see footnote number three, state special ed aid. And that is totally driven by state special ed expense. And you'll, you continue onto the second page, or what's the expense? It's the state's expense. Page two, $44,000, I left out the footnote there, but you'll see a red 40, negative 44,882. And you'll notice that I conservatively brought the revenue projection down a little bit more. I should lay that at 45,000 as well, but I feel like if we do an amendment, it'll be conservative. Let's pull down that one.
But that doesn't, doesn't have anything specifically to do with us. It's not a state's decision to fund it, not 100%.
So that total of state revenue decrease of $100,000, we're just adjusting other revenue items. And materially is on here, I mean, there's a special adjustment. That is a total revenue reduction of maybe $4,000 from projected revenue. On the expenditure side, the primary adjustment is, as I just mentioned, state special ed expenditures. We're also, as long as we are reforecasting, I have increased repairs and maintenance, $9,000. And that was some overages and summer maintenance that occurred. If you prefer not to increase that budget amount, we tend to pull down repairs and maintenances that we have projected further into this school year. So if you'd like to see that held the same, we can certainly make those adjustments to the projection. So overall, that brings net gen ed income down $71,000 from projection to $307,000. So that's gen ed, fund one. 1899, page eight of 10, we have state revenue expenditures for food service fund. A couple of items of positive notes there is we're able to adjust projected revenue at $4,000. We were able to resell our refrigerator and freezer that. In exchange for the walking trees. So we have $4,000 more to go toward our cabins that we're shooting for. I'm able to bring down projected expenses by 4,500 because the actual install of the refrigerator was a total budget. So that's a net change and an increase to fund balance of 8,200 for food service. And on to fund four, that's the community service fund. This is where extended Dave previously went through and it's no longer funded. That's being totally run through YMCA, so it's basically off our books, they're just tenants in our space. So these numbers are much less than when we were prior year, just through question line. We wander over to the first column and see that it came down to 126,000. The adjustments here are an increase to revenue of $9,000 and an increase to expense of $8,000. And that simply that there was more summer camp activity that went through, then we have budgeted. But it is basically a wash, the summer camps are pretty solid, contain whatever they net and profit they spent to improve their program. Okay? So those are the three funds and they all come together. Equal a decrease in projected net income by $62,000, bringing our projected net income to $313,901 this year. Which will bring our fund balance, projected fund balance to $303,000 at year end. The two ratios that I asked you to keep an eye on and you are required to keep an eye on in our bond covenant is the debt service coverage ratio. Which is to be kept at a minimum of 1.10. You'll note that you want this adjustment downward in net income, that we still have a debt service ratio of 1.15. And our fund balance, which our target has been 25% since day one, would bring it down from 26.2 to 25.8.
So a quick question on the general fund, I think you covered this, but David needed it explained one more time. So, in the change in the general fund for expenditures for state special ed expenditures, it looks like there's a reduction of $44,882. Is that because we project less demand for those services? Does that have any practical application at the school? Or is it just, we don't have as much demand for special ed, so we can reduce our budget for expenditures?
Special ed expenses drive the entire budget. And so that is based on the staffing that we see coming through special ed at the beginning of the year. And so it's just fine tuning our projection. And it depends on how much the state is going to reimburse.
So the state gives us less, we spend less?
No, no. We can't, we have to spend, there's another conversation I'd love to.
So are we, are we cutting something or are we adjusting our numbers based on something that I don't understand quite yet?
Okay, and I would love to explain to you, you cannot just use the words cut special ed. I mean, that there.
Is it maintenance of effort?
There's the concept called maintenance of effort. It's all to do with continuing the services, so.
We have that in the library too, where maintenance of effort was a big thing.
Yes, and we're, just real quickly, we're very different in that I use the example in a traditional district. If special ed overspends, which sometimes they have to because of the students' needs, that the rest of the money comes out of the general fund. In charter schools, it goes back through the tuition building system. So we have never, you know, had a situation where we've really tapped into the general fund here, correct? Not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not materially.
Not materially, okay. Now, it's just the difference that the state has decided that they aren't going to reimburse on the level they were before. But it doesn't change how we do services here.
So on the line item where it shows we'll be expending $44,882 less on state special ed expenditures, what does that, what does that practically mean?
Means that the actual contracts that we have for special ed pairs, special ed teachers, special ed equipment is less than we projected last spring. And so therefore, since the expenses are projected to be less, we put those into EDRS. And those are projected to be less than the corresponding revenues projected to be less. I'm just making it extra less, that's a little bit of cushion because we're just getting into this, this school having paid for, well, it was 10% and now 7%. Probably don't know, maybe 13%, you know, by the end of the year. They can change the rules at any time. So this is a little bit of a cushion to bring down the revenue a little more than we're bringing down the expense. That's $10,000.
Understood.
Thank you.
So I am looking for a motion to the special. I'd like to propose to put this amendment.
So, the request from the chief financial officer is for us to amend the budget to reflect reality. And I just underline what Kelly said, we need more time to digest this and we want to do it next month. There's nothing magical about doing it tonight, is that correct?
Yeah.
But, so if everyone's comfortable with the information presented, I'd like a motion to approve the amended budget as presented.
Well, if someone would make the motion, I would like to, please, tonight, which would make that motion. So it's properly documented for audit purposes, this will then be our new amended budget.
Did you go over the contract, the contract with services?
No, I just highlighted that in, as support, or not how we're already set it, as support documents, the net change on buyer.
Here comes the exact language. I make a motion to revise 2015, 2016 budget as presented, I need to read all at once.
And as reflected on that document, you could say.
And as reflected on this document, general fund revenues of $16,600 to 348,558.
He's correspondent at financial.
Food service revenues of $335,412. And food service expenditures of $333,167, bankruptness for untrustables. And fund four revenues of $50,390 and community service expenditures of $46,507. Do we have a second?
A second.
Now, any discussion or questions? Because I think it's important everybody gets their questions answered. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go Mike, go Scott. Who are they playing?
Marshall Luther College.
Chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving real along. Thank you. Consent agenda. So, we have consent agenda that came out of the board packet. Including the board minutes that each other, that we need to review and approve. So, just being formal about this, I'll just open it up to any questions or concerns about the minutes for the HR report.
I would just recommend some sort of correction, but when people speak at open forum, I think it'd be good if we reflected their names since we have, you know, the sign and sheet. So, my recommendation would just be to add Sheila Mariantai, Carrie Goldberg, and Beth Nelson's names to the open forum section. Because I think those were the three speakers last night.
That's a good suggestion, thank you. Any other comments on the minutes on the HR report, any questions? One's going, twice going, three times. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes and HR report as presented.
Hold on, that's it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now. What we've all been waiting for is a global appendix meeting. Faculty compensation plan, appendix meeting. And I really don't have any comments on this, we've seen it a few times, at least I hope everyone's seen it previously. But this is the final appendix to the compensation plan. We'll round out that and it has to be approved to complete our process. So, any discussion or questions about? So any discussion or questions about appendix meeting? It's this document. Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve appendix meeting as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The compensation plan for this year is set. We have a vacancy for Vice Chair. And Jason Langworthy apologizes for not being here. He is not feeling well. Specifically, he said he'll be glad I'm not here, given I'm not there. And so we have a letter of interest from Shane Mueller, which I thought was a wonderful letter. And so Shane is nominating, is being nominated for Vice Chair. Also, we welcome nominations from the floor. If anyone wants to run for Vice Chair at this point, they're welcome to. Hearing none, if there is any discussion on the nomination, I'd welcome that. And I will make a motion to take a vote on Shane Mueller for Vice Chair. Give her a second.
One second.
Any further discussion? So all in favor of Shane Mueller, be our new Vice Chair? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Shane.
Thank you.
And we've got some big shoes to fill because Jason's a Republicanarian. So we're gonna have to keep him on the caner for his Republicanarian expertise. In all seriousness, Shane, thank you very much. Thank you for the very thoughtful letter. And we now have a full slate of officers again. Approval of the World's Best Workforce Report. We may always go to the basketball. So this is the report that we looked at last month. It is a new statutory requirement as of, I believe, 2018. So this is really the first time we've done it. I guess we did it kind of for a half year last year, but this is the first full year, World's Best Workforce Report. And I welcome any comments or questions on the report as presented.
Actually, I read another report out of another school approximately our size, and that's one, looks really good. I thought this was the third, and compared to the one I read online.
Thanks for taking the time to do it. That's a good, that's a good idea. You know, one of the things that, just complete sidebar, I'll be very brief, is that one of the things that we did with the summers, there was a Friends of Education Board Best Practices event here at St. Craig Prep. And there's just a lot of great information that comes from other boards and talking about their experience. And it's a great thing to do too, to go online and look at what they publish. Because all, all the schools have websites and they all have published data like Google. Any other questions about the World's Best Workforce Report?
What's the period covered for this report? Since 2014-2015, is that the school year?
It runs on December first.
Yeah, so we have to...
It doesn't fit for any of the years.
Yeah, it's like a orange headline.
What would be the month?
December...
Two thousand fourteen. December of...
It's December first, yeah, December first to December. So this would be the...
This was last year.
Yeah, this was last year.
The reason I'm asking is, is on page two, it discusses the District Advisory Committee. And respectfully, I don't know that I've ever been a member of the District Advisory Committee. So if you want to scratch me out there, that would be preferred.
I think that's a valid, you know, request and I think we can move forward with, without Tom. Anyone else who wants to be removed, I'm happy to be on it because I've, you know, been learning this process with this World's Best Workforce statute with everybody else. So I'm happy to be part of the advisory board. But I know Tom and Beth and Shane and Susan are new to the board, so maybe they would prefer not to be part of that.
The reason is, is it references the public meetings and I wasn't...
Right.
Yep.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I would also. So can we be on it going forward?
Yes.
Well, you'll be on for next year.
Yeah, you'll be on for a bit, talking to them.
And Tom made this point and I think, and he's underlined it again, I think, is that, you know, the process will have to be stepped up and improved as we go forward with published, you know, information about public meetings. Because frankly, the statute is lengthy and the requirements are duplicative. They're, they're the same as a lot of the other things we do. So we're gonna have to have a separate parallel process for this along with the annual report and along with our report to Friends of Education and so on. So it's a, it's a legitimate issue and it's a learning curve, so thanks, Tom.
May I also ask a question? This would probably be directed towards Kelly. On the, on page five, on that chart, it has the estimate for 2015-16 at eleven sixty-five, is that...
I can't see, I can't see the chart.
Okay. So is that different from the one that we were reviewing? That the projection was eleven forty-nine, that we modified to eleven thirty-nine? Or is this different? Because that's, that's a greater than thirty from where we ended up. But it was, what's that?
Maybe it just depends, yeah, maybe it could just depend on when they wrote this versus when they wrote the budget. Yeah. Yep, so that's something we can just cross check with.
Okay.
So Shane, what I, what I've seen on the total enrollment, if that's what we're referring to on the estimate for 2015-16. Our current, just amended best estimate is one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. And at the time that this was compared, it was one thousand, one sixty-five.
Okay.
So we're fairly close, but we are, and we're sixteen higher, sixteen students larger than we were in, in fiscal year 2015. But we are about thirteen students smaller than projected budget that we just amended. But as Kelly likes to say, and she's not here to say it, all of these documents are living documents, especially the budget. And they will change throughout the year. And part of what she was joking with our comment about is that, you know, sometimes towards the end of the year, we amend it monthly so that we are within those margins of error that they want for the accounting standards. That they want it to be less than one percent. And that's just an ongoing process of amending the budget to make sure you're on track so that you meet the accounting standards. And that's, that's not the way we do it per se, it's the way the accounting industry, the accounting profession does it. Any other questions, good questions?
You know, I know that last time in our minutes, we only talked about that under public meetings, that you're going to change that goal forward. And were we gonna put that in there, that, you know, something that says, okay, you know, next time we'll have a public meeting. These were, these were actual board meetings that these were discussed at. You know, since we'll have public meetings, discussable outcomes and strategies, and these are board meetings. I know that it specifically said last time that it can't be board meetings. And so I'm just thinking, being transparent and honest, you know, we just say, hey, we'll do better next time.
We could explicitly edit this report to state exactly as you're saying, Beth, that we are aware that we need to have separate public meetings for this process, separate from our board meetings, separate from our other related meetings that have a parallel purpose. And I think that's a, that's a legitimate...
And then looking for...
And then going forward, you...
Finding, yes, yep.
Well, you're too...
Yep.
So just to make sure we're capturing all this, I'm seeing that four names will be removed from the District Advisory Committee and that we will make a qualifying statement about public meetings. That's good input. Anything else?
We do have to go on this tonight.
No.
With those changes?
With those changes, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that those are captured. Any other questions or input? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the World's Best Workforce 2014-15 as amended tonight.
Somewhere.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for focusing on that. And now, the long awaited Rich Dipple.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I think most of you know me, I'm Rich Dipple, Activities Director here at St. Craig Prep. I started in this position in 2009. I want to start by introducing my cohort. Kevin Stein was hired this summer as the Associate Activities Director. I took the opportunity today to go back and work at the first PowerPoint presentation that I did after I was hired here in 2009. We talked about a lot of different things. We've done a survey, we've talked to a number of our kids. We talked about this while the...
We get that the same thing.
Did you reboot?
I did reboot, I just turned it on and plugged it in.
He's gonna ask you if you can turn it on.
Normally it's something like that, we just...
Yes, anybody need some monitor here?
When I look back at that presentation, and a lot of that presentation was about goals and establishing a foundation and moving the programming forward. And tonight, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna talk a little bit about the administration of what we do. We all understand, I think, we see the headlines in the sports page, we watched the prep bowl this weekend or heard about the volleyball state tournament at the Xcel Energy Center this weekend. But the reality is that doesn't happen kind of on its own. It happens through a lot of different levels of administration. And I think that it's important that as a board, as you hear about the things that we're doing on this side of the building and over in the finite side of the building, that you have an understanding of the realities and the layers that are a part of high school activities and athletic administration. I'm not an apple guy. I'm gonna talk about six different organizations that we are affiliated with as a Craig Preparatory Academy. The first is the National Federation of State High School Associations, the Minnesota State High School League, which is where I'll spend the majority of our conversation. The MC2A, the Minnesota Christian Athletic Association, is the conference that we've just joined. I want to have a conversation about that and what that means to us and how we will play a part in that conference. Region 4A is actually a subset of the Minnesota State High School League, you know, it's own financial entity. And then there's two associations that are professional associations that I just want to make you aware of. First of all, in terms of a flow, the National Federation sits on the top of high school activities. They write the rules, they're the ones that will come down and should tell everybody else, this is how we're gonna play the games. The Minnesota State High School League administers all of the activities within the state of Minnesota. Off of that comes the Minnesota, the conferences, and then also Region 4A. We are a member of all three of those organizations, the High School League, Region 4A, and the MC2A. On your right hand side, the NIAAA and the MNIAAA, they serve as advisory boards or advisory associations and professional associations for activities administrators. First, we'll talk about the National Federation. I think it's important that we understand the mission. Too often today, and Kevin will back me up on this, too often today, when we hear about high school athletics, or athletics at all, we're hearing negative stories. We're hearing things about something going wrong. We had a great prep bowl this weekend, but the story that got to the headlines was the incident that took place in the 4A championship game where a boy stepped over a line and committed probably one of the, a pretty egregious unsportsmanlike act that was caught on videotape. So there was a lot of conversation about that and there was a lot of other stuff that went on that was great that was missed. The important thing for us to remember, as members of the National Federation and the Minnesota State High School League, is that this is educational-based athletics. Too often now, we're seeing athletics, in our opinion, moving away from that model of education-based athletics or activities. They're being based more of a European model where we're gonna play and it's always gonna be about what the score is on the board at the end of the night. So it's important to understand that the mission statement of the National Federation is specific to education-based interscholastic activities. The National Federation was started in 1920. They've been organizing these programs for, had for a very, very long time. All fifty states have state associations that are a part of the National Federation. They publish the rules for sixteen sports. And that means when we went to a three-point line, it was written at the national level. There are somewhat rules that still get to go back and forth. If Coach Stein goes over to play basketball in Wisconsin, they're gonna play four quarters, they're not gonna play halves. So there are some rules that are still written at the state level. But for the most part, particularly when it comes to safety, the rules are written at the National Federation. They also administer fine arts, speech theater, debate, and music programs. They write the policies that allow those programs to be adjudicated. They're not written at the state level. Eighteen thousand high schools, over eleven million students are serviced by the National Federation and the programs that they provide. And again, we talk about education-based programs. The High School League is a member of the National Federation. And its mission statement pretty much reiterates the fact that we're based on making sure we teach and educate our students through our programs. They're educationally-based programs. One of the biggest efforts that are being made by the High School League now is under the Why We Play banner. And it's another presentation that we'll come back to you with later on. We want to be in front of you more than one time this year. And we're gonna talk about why we play and the importance of what we have our coaches emphasizing. So that's one of the things that the High School League is emphasizing this year. The High School League this year, I'll move my cursor. The High School League this year is celebrating its centennial. It's one of the oldest federations in the country. Five hundred member schools, two hundred thousand students, pretty unique, sixty-five home schools are a part of the High School League. In order for a student to play in a High School League-sponsored activity, that home school needs to join the league. The league is made up of its members. We join each year. So that includes any home school students and they get to be their own school. They get to be on the league website and everything, we'll get to that point. It's made up of public and private schools. This changed a number of years ago, probably during the time I moved in Minnesota, actually where the private schools became a member of the High School League. We pay a membership fee to go to the High School League every year, based on the number of programs that we participate in. It's a per sport or per activity fee. Twenty-six sports, six co-curricular programs. It also establishes the calendars and runs the state tournaments. It's important to understand the distinction here. The Minnesota State High School League runs all of the state tournaments financially. They're financially responsible for it, they're the tournament directors, they give those sponsors. The section tournaments, that we'll talk about in a little while, are run by a separate entity. They do not take any of the money that comes in from the gate. For example, when we hosted volleyball, when we hosted soccer this last year, we took money in that didn't have anything to do with the State High School League. Even though it was the beginning of the State High School League playoffs, it was done by a different organization. The adapted programs, great question. Adapted programs, we play adapted soccer, we play adapted hockey, PI and physically impaired and... Yep, I'm sorry. There's two levels of adapted sports. At this point, we've only had two or three students who have participated in adaptive, in adaptive sports because we don't have a large population. We have co-op with Stillwater. But both physically handicapped and mentally handicapped students have the opportunity to participate in those programs. They have their own state tournaments, they have their own, they have their own conferences, they have the opportunity to, to play in those sports. They also have the opportunity to compete in the state track, actually, in those events. They've made that a dash into the track rules this last, two years ago. In those events, they've made that a dash into the, uh, track rules this last two years ago. They also, the High School League doesn't just run the games or run the programs. It also takes very seriously its responsibility in helping bring forward education-based activities. Uh, there's strong sportsmanship programs. There are strong chemical health programs that are initiated by the High School League. Uh, it oversees the education and certification of all coaches. About four years ago, the High School League, excuse me, the Minnesota State Legislature mandated that all coaches meet certain criteria and go through certain specific certification processes. Uh, so every stu, every coach that we have on staff, not just the head coaches, but every coach who has contact with our students must go through a certification program that's handled by the State High School League. Forty-five hundred officials. This is probably one of the biggest Achilles' heels that the High School League is currently facing. Is the officials that actually adjudicate our games, that show up and blow the whistles. Great opportunities. I strongly encourage our students as they start to leave the high school to pursue opportunities to make a lot of money as an official, quite frankly. And there's not enough of them right now in the state. Uh, they also establish baseline eligibility rules for high school sports. This is where you'll hear also a lot of conversation about the Minnesota State High School League. Why does one kid get to play here and not get to play there? This also had to do with the transgender rules that you heard about last year. This is where the High School League establishes policy regarding participation in the programs sponsored by the league. Eight point six million dollar budget, Minnesota State High School League. None of it comes from the state. It all comes from their revenue that they produce by selling tickets to their state tournaments and through their advertisers. And us paying them to participate in the programs. In order to administer this thing that we've just talked about, the state divides itself up into eight sections or regions for administration. Uh, your left is Class A. Class A is deemed as a small school sections or regions. On the right-hand side is Class Double A, the big schools, the Stillwaters. We're in Class A. Stillwater area high school is considered a double A school for administrative purposes. You can see how the state is divided. We'll talk about that a little bit as we go through here. Because of the larger schools, they tend to have smaller sections. They take the biggest schools. They don't want to put a big school with a small, so from an administrative standpoint, they have fewer large schools in their sections. We'll get to that too. So you can see that the entire metropolitan area is Region 4A, which we are a member of. The Board of Directors consists of twenty-one members that represent fifteen different groups. This is the decision-making body. This is you guys for the High School League. Uh, they're made up of representatives from throughout the state. It's not the staff that make the decisions. It's a very similar model to here where staff makes recommendations. The Board of Directors actually makes the decisions. This is the current Board of Directions, the Directors. You can see that they do it geographically, so there's balance throughout the state and also throughout both large and small schools. It's also important to note that the fine arts are represented. Mr. McDonald is infamous in the state of Minnesota. Just an outstanding educator. And also from the principals, from music, from the School Board Association. And then actually the governor has four appointments to the Minnesota State High School League Board. These twenty-one individuals on a rotating basis, these twenty-one seats are what make up the board that runs the league. The president is chosen from within this board. If there's questions that come up at all, I'm the one willing to answer them. Classes, we hear a lot about classes, why the big schools don't play the small schools, et cetera. And I won't spend too much time on this. But the High School League establishes competitive classes based on the enrollment and the number of schools that participate. So if we only have fifteen schools that are participating in an individual program, that means there's only going to be one class. If there's a hundred and fifty schools that are participating and we have Stillwater participating, participating in St. Croix Prep, now we're going to create classes so that there's a competitive balance. For St. Croix Prep, these are the programs that we're involved with at some level. So you can see that Alpine Skiing does not have a lot of schools participating. They don't ski down at Amboy. But they do ski up in Duluth. There's actually only four competitive sections in Alpine Skiing. There's only about forty schools that participate in Alpine at this point, so there's only one class. Baseball, on the other hand, lots of schools play baseball. So St. Croix Prep will not compete with Stillwater in order to get to a state tournament. We're going to create competitive balance. Some of the other programs that you see cross-country, fewer participating schools, so there's only two classes. Football, as we saw this last weekend, because of a competitive balance there, uh, they went to six classes. Questions? Now, as I said, we've been assigned to Region 4A. The state is divided into sixteen administrative regions. Each of the individual regions now is responsible to run section tournaments, to help determine who actually plays in the state tournament. We're, there's eight big regions, or eight regions, and then I talked about the fact that we've been assigned to Region 4A. Thirty-nine section tournaments are administered by our tournament or by our section. Uh, there's one individual, Mike Oric, who's former AD over at Concordia Roseville, who is the administrator of the district itself or of the region. He's the executive secretary. Each of the regions operates independently of the High School League. In other words, they have their own money. They pay all their own bills. There's no money that crosses over except for us, Region 4A. We're not really sure why this is. I have some theories, but the reality is that Region 4A doesn't have any really big tournaments that draw in a lot of money. Big tournaments that make money, football and hockey. We haven't been assigned hockey tournaments that draw enough money for us to pay all of our bills, so the High School League actually subsidizes Region 4A by about ten thousand dollars a year. Region 4A has a hundred and fifteen schools in it. Where administrative region for double A has twelve. There's a lot of home schools that are included in here. About half of these schools are actually brick and mortar buildings like we are. The rest are small, home schools are, um, online schools, schools that are not what you would consider brick and mortar. Uh, as I said, Mike Oric manages our region.
Can I ask a question, Rich?
Yep.
Um, how many of those other schools in our district are charter schools?
Well, that's a great question. Um, the majority of the charter schools in the state are actually in Region 4A. I would have to count, but I would suggest probably at least twenty-five, as just off the top of my head. Now, the MC2A, and yes, this is the symbol logo of the conference. We'll talk about how we got here and then we can have the conversation about the realities of being a part of this conference. First of all, so we understand conferences provide competitive opportunities for a set of schools. Again, they operate independently of everybody else, under all the rules, but financially they're their own independent entity. Schools will go into a conference in order to create competition and ease scheduling. Uh, for the last, I don't know, six years, we've been independent for the most part. So scheduling has been done by me, calling up schools, asking for us to play games. Uh, for basketball, that's fifty-two games a year, plus lower levels. Uh, these are the current members of the MC2A. Schools will come together for different reasons. And at times you will have read about schools and moving from conference to conference. Reality was that this set of schools, the original set of schools came together, they were all Christian-based schools. Uh, at this point, they now have added four public schools to their conference. Pat Charter School, Spectrum Charter School, and then also Lester Prairie is a public school on the far western edge. So the conference is now made up of twelve schools. And this is where we all sit. St. Croix Prep out here to the east, Lester Prairie to the west. The northern edge is Spectrum. The southern edge, I suppose you would call southwestern Bethany. I know everybody gets a little hyper about, okay, this is a big conference. We have a long ways to drive. I grew up in the L. State. I coached when I first came up in the Big Nine, which is Winona, Albert Lee, New Ulm. So, a little perspective. The one trip that we get to make out to Lester Prairie, Coach Stein has promised to buy his basketball team pizza each time on the way there and back. So the reality is, yes, there is some distance between some of the schools, but proximity, we can't look at the size of the school. We look at the proximity of every school that's in the conference. Currently, the MC2A provides structured conference play for these sports. What this means is that our schedule will be done for conference play for each of these sports. There'll be a conference championship that'll be awarded. There'll be all conference awards that'll be presented. So it'll save quite a bit and give our students a great opportunity to participate against smaller-sized schools and a chance to win hardware. The other thing about conferences are they provide opportunity to bring students together in their activities programs. Uh, one of the best programs that I had at a previous school, uh, we did a conference art show. We picked one location. The art students came in and presented their works and we were open for two or three days where our students had the opportunity to display their works as a conference. Uh, schools would schedule buses in. It was a smaller conference geographically. So schools were able to bring their lower school students or their elementary school students over to display that work. Uh, we've also done in the past theater workshops where we brought kids in, had them adjudicated, had the opportunity to do clinics with them. So those are something, another opportunity that comes with membership in a conference. Uh, as we talked about this, it's an independent financial entity. We'll pay a registration fee. They'll be collected at the beginning of each year based on a varsity team. Uh, those funds are used to pay for the awards that are presented to each of the kids during the year and the trophies that go along with that. How did we end up in the MC2A? Three deciding factors. One of the first things, actually in my interview back in two thousand and nine, I had looked at conferences and where this school would fall in its future. And quite frankly, there's really few opportunities or few options. Conferences move around a little bit, but not too much. We have to look at the enrollment of the schools that are in the conference itself. I can't apply to the SEC or the Metro West or the Metro East. I can't play South St. Paul. I can't play St. Thomas and have students have success on a regular basis. We have to match enrollment. We have to look at the programs and the levels offered. We have, it doesn't also bode well for us to play against schools or be in a conference that has schools smaller than us. Because if I set up a varsity basketball schedule against a school that has fewer kids, I only get to play one game maybe where I have three teams that I need games for. Uh, also the geography. We obviously have to look at that. We're not going to take a look at a conference that's up on the range. So, back over the years, I've looked at four different conferences to try and match what would be best for St. Croix Prep, not only today, but going towards the future. There are three conferences, the MCAA, the Tri-Metro, and there's a backstory there, but we're going to leave that alone. The Independent Metro Athletic Conference and the East Metro Athletic Conference. Enrollment is the numbers to the right of each of these. And again, this might not be exactly correct today because things do move around. The Tri-Metro was a conference that we felt had opportunity for us. But when we looked at De La Salle and Columbia Heights, the High School League actually placed those schools in Fridley and then Visitation is a girls' only, so they have to double their enrollment. There was some concern in terms of competitiveness within this conference. We would only have considered going into this conference if they had split into two, if they had gone a big school, small school conference situation. The IMA, this is a group of, I'll use the term renegades, that broke off from a conference and formed their own just recently. Fairly good match for us in terms of enrollment size and proximity, a little bit more west metro heavy than east metro, but it would have been a viable option for us. Eastern Minnesota is the good example of that conference that's too small. North Lakes, Community of Peace, enrollments that are about half of ours and levels of play that would not match up with what we project to go forward with. Three levels of basketball, both the boys and girls' side, versus most of these schools will have only one or maybe two levels. Just being using that as an example. And then the MC2A, which are basically the schools that I had been scheduling for the majority of the time. Some of the other schools we've been scheduling also. But from an enrollment standpoint, very similar to our size, we're a little bit bigger than some of the schools. So, as we went forward with that, I began applying to schools, actually, or to conferences in, in two thousand and twelve. We sent, we made our initial inquiries. Uh, we reached out just to see where people were at. There was some changing that was taking place in conferences at that time. Uh, there was some movement within those conferences. I wanted to make sure people knew that we were shopping. Uh, we applied to three different conferences, the MC2A, the IMAC, and the Tri-Metro Conference. Some of you remember that we did start a little bit of a charter school conference for two years. It proved to not be a competitive balance for us. We participated in that conference and had some levels of success, but we knew that there were four schools that were not going to go in the same direction that we were. And quite frankly, there was one school that was, um, casually saying this, not reflecting good on the other members of the conference. And we didn't feel that was appropriate for us to stay there. So, we withdrew from that conference in two thousand and thirteen. Those schools are listed here that we participated in. Spectrum High School out in Alpriver, uh, kind of a twin sister of ours, if you want to look at them that way. A large, larger charter school in the west metro and St. Croix Prep both withdrew at the same time. Uh, the two thousand and fourteen applications to Tri-Metro, IMAC, and MC2A were all rejected in January of this year. They all said, no, we don't want you. For various different reasons. IMAC because they were sixth and they were just kind of getting their wheels underneath them. The Tri-Metro because they were afraid of an imbalance and they didn't know exactly what we were going to be. And the MC2A at that point was also an even number. They didn't feel like they wanted to add anybody. Two thousand and fifteen, in the summer, this last summer, I resubmitted applications to all three of the conferences. And then I was invited in August to present to the MC2A in person. Uh, one thing that had taken place, Spectrum had been placed by the High School League in the MC2A. Uh, that gave them an odd number of eleven and bringing us in brought them back to twelve. So we were invited at that point. We feel it's a really good fit for us. Number one, because the schools are of similar size. Number two, because they have similar philosophy regarding their programs. It's about making sure that the games are played correctly. It's not just necessarily measured on the scoreboard. We're a probationary member for one year and will be added as a full member. In other words, next year we'll play in the conference. We have our conference schedules for soccer, for example. We can't win a conference championship next year. But the year after that, we will be able to.
Can we get the Mitchell over here?
No. They'll, that's on your way too. I think that they can win honorable mention awards because there's honorable mention awards. But that probably is a question we should ask, clarify that tomorrow. We have a conference meeting tomorrow. Uh, let's back up one. Okay, so we are the member of the Minnesota Christian Athletic Alliance. We are a public school. The reality is, they understand that we're a public school and if they're a private school, they're faith-based. We're not. Yes, banners will go up. We will not hang this banner. Most of the times when you go into a public school gym or a conference gym, you will see banners from all the conferences, conference teams, and then you'll see the conference logo. Uh, we will not hang the conference logo. We will hang the other schools' logos because that's what they are. That's who they are. And that represents them. That does not represent us. I think that we've all, you've heard conversations here. Our coaches are very clear in terms of their responsibility as it comes to our students and their faith and how it interjects itself into the athletic field. When we go to Southwest Christian, there will be a prayer said before the foot, before a game, before a basketball game. Students are given the opportunity to participate or to not. Our staff does not. At the conclusion of the game, if the, if we're at another school, if we're at New Life Academy and there's a prayer after the game, the students are directed, if you want to participate, you may. You do not have to. My staff is directed to not participate as a member of a public school. It's a fine line that we walk. Uh, but we do feel that from a competitive standpoint, this is the best place for us to be. The conference is changing also. It's important to understand that. There are four public schools within this conference now and we believe that the conference will continue to change. Obviously, there's a strong faith-based allegiance in this conference, but we think that it is still a good fit for us. So, I know that there's some concerns about that. And if you have further questions about it, please don't hesitate to ask me about it if you want to talk about it now. But we spent a lot of time talking about this and where we were going to land, if we were going to be independent forever or if we're going to get ourselves into a, into a conference.
Is this where you're, where you've seen yourself for several years or are you looking to apply to the other local one or other local two or?
That's a great question. We think that this is our best fit for as long as we can stay here, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, the stability of the schools that are involved in the conference. Number two, it gives us the opportunity to create the rivalries. They've already started to happen for us. Spectrum being on the west. Spectrum being on the West Metro and being our twin, we've already started to develop a rivalry with that school. New Life Academy, we've started to develop a rivalry with that school, so it kind of feeds into the programs. We don't see ourselves getting much bigger. Getting into the Tri-Metro Conference would be the next alternative. Or the IMAC, which is also, again, a faith-based, private school conference, so it'd be a very similar situation for us. I can't say forever, I can say that I would protect us staying here for a number of years though.
How many of the programs and activities that we have does that list cover? It looks like it's pretty much the sports of the, you know, the most common sports, I guess is the way I would say it.
Yes, I would say...
So is that about half of our programs, is that a quarter?
I want to look and make sure that I'm giving you correct information. We participated in all of these, except for girls' golf. Yes, we're bringing soccer back this year. We had a situation last year, I think some of you were aware of, we had some injuries right at the very beginning of the season. Created a situation where we weren't able to support the program for the entire season. We met with those girls, we have a strong group of girls who are committed to the program, enough girls that we're able to go forward with the varsity program this year. So, except for girls' golf, we participated in all of these programs.
And then beyond that, I mean, we have archery, and we have football that we do with New Life Academy, and we have all the non-sport programs. So is this like a quarter of all of our stuff that we do, or how, I'm wondering kind of how much, how much is this?
Yeah, it's all of our athletic programs, except for Alpine skiing. And for archery, archery, there is no, there's no high school league sponsorship for that, there's no conferences. And football's actually been taken out of the conference equation. There's no conference right now that sponsors football, it's done at the district level, it's done at the state level, actually, through the high school league. In terms of other programming that we will supplement, arts, fine arts, those types of things, the conference will step up them. They anticipate us doing both art and theater programming through the conference. It will be clinic-based, where the conference will come together and bring clinicians in and give students the opportunity to participate at that level. Debate, speech, those programs are not based in a conference for the most part, they're independently scheduled into tournaments. There's not a conference schedule because there's no conference champion. They're organized a little bit differently.
And then is there a board or an executive director who actually sits down and spits out the schedule and kind of does the administrative work?
The MC2A is run by the activities directors themselves, they serve as the board. There's a president or a chairman and a vice chairman that are elected and do the agenda and call the meeting to order and run that through. There is a scheduler that's assigned for each of the individual sports. One gentleman gets all the basketball schedules, he does all those and sends them to the conference. A different AD gets the volleyball schedule and does that and sends that out.
What about girls' lacrosse?
Yep, great question. Correct, it's not in this, we are not in a conference in girls' lacrosse, I knew there was one more that I was missing. Girls' lacrosse, because it's a relatively new sport and just starting to grow, and actually, we're probably the smallest school in the state that's playing girls' lacrosse right now. We are not in a conference, and there aren't very many conferences that are actually crowning girls' lacrosse champions. Maybe the SEC, the Suburban East Conference might be, because I think they've got enough teams that are not playing. We play an independent schedule still in girls' lacrosse. At some point, we may have an opportunity to add that, it just depends on what the other schools do. At this point, we do not have boys' lacrosse, we haven't had enough interest. We've lost, as Mr. Zacharice said, we've lost some boys this year, over to Montomigay actually, to play lacrosse. Because we haven't had enough of a generated activity level to support it.
Do we play with Snodden schools at all?
At times we do, yep. We'll cross over with boys' basketball this year with Hudson. It's not too frequently that we do that, but there are times where we will reach across the border.
Do we have to play by the four quarter rule?
It depends on where we are, actually, that's an important factor. It's funny because Wisconsin came over here, I think Spring Valley came over here, and Wisconsin is also, and I'm from Wisconsin, they're backwards in how they use their, where their uniforms. They're opposite of they are in Minnesota, so if we wear white at home, it's where we're wearing white at home or dark at home.
Where we're dark at home, Wisconsin is white at home.
So, we had a team show up with their darks.
And also in basketball, I think we're doing a one-year probation period where they're going to try halves in Wisconsin this year.
Wow, getting to the 20th century.
And we, and we like run this by like legal staff, I mean, as far as like, do we allow them to pray when they come here for our school? You know, I, I just think that...
Their prayers will be in the locker room, like it won't even be witnessed. I coached at a tune race last year, so I'm familiar with a lot of the belongings of the private Catholic athletic program. You wouldn't know, you wouldn't know either way if you were sitting in the...
So when they're invited to pray, how does, I mean, I'm just, how does that happen? I'm just concerned that this is going to open itself to...
They're not invited to pray here, it's only when we go to their places? Straight up, at times there are. The boys, boys or the girls will approach the other teams, not in the, not in the presence of coaches all the time. Kids will know each other, particularly when we play New Life Academy, the kids know each other pretty well. The kids will approach each other, and that's why each of the coaches has been instructed that if they choose to do that, it's their own free will. And no, we can't stop them from praying, it's just like we don't, but we don't participate, it's just like gathering at the flag ball. We don't stop it, and that, we're not, we're in fine legal standing there, but we can't participate or facilitate. So that's the situation. Yes, we try and, it's a fine line to walk, because we have to recognize their rights and their privileges while also understanding that we're part of a public school. So it is a, it's a little bit of a fine line.
And being a high school principal against someone who used to be in a conference with Catholic schools, it's kind of like when they do an alma mater. You respect what they do and then you do your own thing too. It's really not, it, it's never a problem. So it's just like, we run it by...
We run it by outside counsel, there are four schools that are with us in this charter schools that are in the same conference that have the same issue. And we've all cross-pollinated, cross-referenced, and it's not, it's not an issue based on outside legal opinion. That also, also just, I mean, you know, one of the passive, this is not just an issue in this conference experience, so this is happening all over the country. So this is a national practice that is very common across the country. But it's a good question, and it's a legitimate issue, and will someone pull attention out of somebody, will someone like an issue something? Maybe, but it's happening all over the state, all over the country. It's not unique or in any way like we're forging new ground in any way.
Right, I just want to make sure that, you know, as a public school, we're being respectful to everybody's beliefs and, you know, when it says we're part of the Christian Association. Obviously, I would make some assumptions, you know, and I just want to make sure that we're welcoming...
Yes, exactly, and that's why we are a part of the MCA. And that's the terminology that we will use, obviously, it's not that, that's the acronym. But it's something that we think that we can manage. And that kind of leads into this next thing, which is the NIA triple A and the NIA triple A. I'm only going to spend about two seconds on this. This is my professional organization, and quite frankly, this is where we learn about this stuff. Each year, I attend a conference up in St. Cloud, and we deal with these issues as athletic directors and activities directors. We have a three-day conference, and we talk about these kinds of exact issues, how do we deal with them? We talk about legal issues, we talk about how we address our kids, how we create captains councils. It's a really important organization for us as professionals. They also serve as an advisory, there's an advisory portion of the NIA triple A that serves as an advisory council to the... Kind of summary of where we're at right now, we have 18 varsity teams that are participating in 15 separate programs. I can give you the whole list, I get to show it today, Friends of Education tomorrow. Over 60 coaches and advisors within our staffing, a lot of individuals. 2014, 15, just completed the season, we had over 250 of our seventh through 12th graders participated in at least one activities department program. It's about 50% of the activities body or student body. We wish to push that a little bit higher, and I think that probably that's a soft number based on the fact that we didn't necessarily count everybody that participated in ski club or Nordic skiing or some of the other programs that were not a part of the green program. We want to push that goal towards 65% by the end of the 16, 17 school year. Last couple of slides here.
While you're looking for your slide, just have to comment, so we talked about boys' lacrosse and losing a group of students to Montomigay, which is a challenge that we've had since the school was formed. But to see 15 varsity sports, 18 varsity sports, 15 different activities, it's just such a remarkable change. We no longer are losing, in my daughter's class, we lost half the class because the guys wanted to play hockey at school, or they wanted to go play sports on the cell.
But we still could get hockey.
So, we can talk about those.
That's a hockey mom.
The point is that we still lose kids to other schools because of athletics, but we no longer have a mass, I said this in 7th grade through 9th grade, because we offer such a robust program, and it's a, it's a huge amazingly steep growth curve that has really changed the complexion of the school in a very positive way, so.
Don't talk about hockey?
Well, I do want, I do want to talk about hockey. I was getting approached by someone that said that they, they would like to see hockey here.
Yes.
That they have, they have ice time, that, that, that they keep going up against is saying that we don't want insurance. And, so I'm just wondering, you know, on behalf of that, is this a discussion that you can pass and when can that happen?
Here's what I'll tell you about hockey. And this, quite frankly, can be applied to football too, in terms of playing football independently. Cost prohibitive, very, very expensive, incredibly expensive program to run. From the equipment that you need to downstroke to pay for at the beginning, to the ice time that you will pay for every day. Public schools have a specific fund that they get, that they are able to use to pay for both green fees and ice time. We don't get that because we're charter school. Number two, the number of kids that it takes to run a hockey program, meshed up with where we're at right now, is very, we're not there yet. We'd have to have that massive bodies to start, we could get to that number. The better alternative is the football model that we have now, and that would be to co-op with someone. To have somebody else be the primary school and then our kids play there. I know I've got four or five boys that would be more than interested in probably the same number of girls that would be interested. But it's getting that school to say, "Yes, we'd like to have your students come play for us." Outside, if I'm the chair of X school over here who's got a hockey team and I've got a full roster and I've actually cut kids, I'm not bringing four kids over from St. Croix Prep. Because I just cut four kids from my school district, and now I'm going to put these kids on, even though they're better hockey players, I'm going to have school board members talking to me about cutting school X parent kids for other kids from the outside. That's one issue. Number two, for the smaller schools that need players, if we combine, we now take the enrollment of St. Croix Prep and of school X and we put them together, and now we maybe have to move up a class.
We can talk about this later.
Sure.
I think he's a great topic for a board.
Yes.
Talking about all the different activities, I have a question, this is an important part of who we are.
Last two things, and then I'm going to get out of your way. There's two issues that we really face on a regular basis here. One is coach retention. It is vitally important that we have quality people at the front of the classroom every day. Mr. Renna will tell you that, every one of the directors will tell you that. You have to have a good person at the front of the room, it doesn't matter, you have the smartest class in the world. If you don't have somebody at the front of the room doing the good work, it ain't going to matter. The same can be applied to an athletic team or to activities program. If we don't have a strong educator, a person who's based in education, it makes it difficult for the program to be successful. We're rolling over coaches on a pretty good clip at this point. One, because we're new, we've had a lot of parents step forward and provide us great leadership at the beginning, and now they've done their dewey and they're moving on. Mr. Scholmeyer did great work for us and ran the girls' basketball program for a number of years, and now he's taken a step to the side. So we need to continue to work. Reality is, we are a prep school, we're a charter school, our, and it's on the board agenda. The reality is, we don't pay nearly what they pay up the hill, or over Montomigay, or at most schools. So it's an issue that we have to address. Number two is facility development and maintenance. We've built these programs and now we need to find places for them to play. Our inside facilities are outstanding, our exterior facilities, on the other hand, part of the reason we can't play lacrosse is we've only got the one field. I've spent the last three weeks, and Coach Stein will tell you this, pulling my hair out over the soccer schedule, because with only one field and no lights, I have to try and get about 16 or 17 soccer matches on one field. And that proves hard when we can't play on Wednesday, we can't play on Friday, you really don't want to play on Mondays because we're just coming off of a weekend. So we're down to a five-week season and about 10 days to fit all those games in. Yeah, and it can start very early. So, the addition of facilities in order to be able to maintain those, and then the depth of program. We'll use soccer as an example, our JV and C squad teams played all of their matches except maybe one or two, Darrell Lucy, Witten Bell. And we paid to rent those fields and then we bussed those kids down there one way. So it's a conversation that I think that we continue to have. We've developed some ideas for out on the north field, some opportunities for us. We've thought forward to see what we need and what we hope to accomplish. So, I guess those are the two things that I'm going to kind of leave you with, saying we're continuing to move forward. If there's any questions or...
I have just one suggestion, I know we have a religious accommodations policy, because we signed the statement of assurances. It says we did, and I asked about it in our initial meeting. It might be a good idea to pull that out and take a look at it, and it sounds like there's a lot of experience here at the school. And just see if there's anything in there that might be tweaking or that our, you know, arrival in this conference would make us want to rethink or work differently or whatever. Because if we've already done the right work on having a religious accommodations policy, I think it's just a question of, does this change anything? Or are we covering up everything that we're covering up?
Good point. And I think that we do have some house scholars, that's a great, great suggestion. We're pursuing in the next few weeks or month. I would suggest that the other two strategic issues that are, again, good topics for board retreat. So we can take them to all day or even maybe a two week camp, board retreat, and have some great conversations about activities. Okay, thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
What a great success story.
Making progress, not fair. We're to the point on the agenda where we're going to talk about strategic initiatives, and this is purely, if there is a verbal update that anyone would like to give, purely informational, it doesn't require anyone to say anything, if there's nothing to report at this point, we just want to keep it on the agenda on a rolling basis to keep updating each other about what's, what's being done. So, if based on the agenda, succession planning, board retreat, parent group, governance, conversation, if anyone would like to share in that order, succession, starting with succession plan, they're welcome to. Absolutely no obligation to say anything and not expecting any prepared remarks or anything, so.
Well, Nicole and I prepared a little document that we just, you know, passed out to everyone. We have, I mean, I hope probably to, for public, for open meeting laws, we can't invite you to our Google Docs. Our Google Drive folder that we're keeping all of our documents on. But if anyone is interested in any of these documents we're looking at, if you're, if you're interested in more in succession planning and you have questions...
To really volunteer.
Yeah, oh yeah, really engaging. But so we've kind of, you know, robed and numbed some of the ideas that are guiding our, guiding our direction right now. If there's something else you think we should be thinking of, by all means, let us know. But that's about, I mean, that's about it, our emails are on it, but you already have those. But if you, but if you're interested, I will also, I'll also give you a, a list of our like works consulted page, MLF format, no, it's APA format, sorry. But I'm more than happy to share any of that stuff with you, or Nicole can share that with you as well.
Exciting to see, any questions or any other thoughts?
I think there's a lot more than what I think we thought, it was going to be... So many questions, I think it just more, it just more and more questions kept coming up.
I would just comment that I think it's at the heart of, it's one of the key issues...
I would just comment that I think it's at the heart of, it's one of the key issues this board needs to look at. So I'm grateful for your commitment to giving us insight into, it's a really key piece of the board to this board going forward, so thank you.
Again, I mean, I think, I mean, you both think it's very important, we're both very passionate about it, so if there's anything that you wanna know, please feel free to email one of us and we're more than happy to give you our thoughts on that as well.
I'll take it up on my, thank you.
So, Susan, do you wanna talk about anything with the board retreat or just?
I think it was just kind of highlighting ideas for discussion. I added a couple of things that reached the ball. I know, it's about coordination and facility development and maintenance. I think talking about your question with the, what is a religious help would be pertinent to discuss as well. So I can just all right there, those are ideas that was presented to me from previous board retreat topics. Well, I think the idea was January, February, and I don't know, pulling at which, I don't know if it's been done in the past. If we throw updates and then, if we can all make them, then that's what we do. I don't know what the standard practice is, but.
So we can have a quick discussion tonight. We're doing okay on time or was it late? I, in the past, what we've done is just kind of hashed around, just throwing out some ideas for dates and timeframes and then, and then actually, you know, sent around, emailed only for the specific purpose, just for scheduling purposes. But I, I would suggest that probably, you know, to shoot for late January is a good goal, and then it tends to slip is my experience. So, does anyone want to throw any considerations or timing issues for the date?
How about at the next meeting we come, I think the sooner we did that date, the better for us.
You're really smart to, yeah, to encourage that because it will, it will be the end of December before we know it, so.
I think how we did it last year too is we voted on dates, right? And the majority of the people that could make it to that date stopped and they just felt hard to find it.
They have to trust you on that.
Yeah. No one can make any one particular date.
Yeah, we always make this one or two, so.
Okay. Do you, do you think you could share that process with Susan to help her become more of what you do?
My only concern, I mean, we, I don't wanna, you know, dig the fact, but my only concern waiting till next month to check the date is securing a location.
Oh, true.
So, because of the fact that it wouldn't be until December fifteenth that we meet again. So, I can certainly, you know, figure out what, and then just before, just via email.
Yep, yep.
I know. Is that okay?
There's a, there's a really good website called When Is Good? And you can, you blast out the email to everyone's email addresses and then you just go in and you click on the dates that work for you.
Oh, that's good.
So if you pick, you know, three or four different weekends in January or February, I found that's an easy way, or a good way to try to figure out who can make which date is the best.
Really, just like whenisgood.com.
I think if you Google "When Is Good," it'll come up. There might be whenisgood.net or something like that. I haven't used it in a while.
Good suggestion. Thank you very much.
That's great.
We can, we can.
Should ask if it's the athletics.
Yeah.
Twenty-first century, right. Any other parent group thoughts, Susan? Are we good?
Well, I just reiterating, you know, what the thought process was that we went into this. I met with the chairs of the parent group. We have scheduled a couple, our meeting is Thursday. We're hopeful that there'll be good attendance. You know, I think it's acknowledgement of, we just need to try to do what we can. So I guess if there's any suggestions on meetings, subject matter, other ways, creative ways to get that participation, I welcome that because it's, it's been a process and I think we need to continue to work on that.
I'm just, I'm really excited that as a school we can have later meetings and so, super petty. But where it says, on number one, add one evening a month to provide additional opportunities for working parents. I think if we just could say, parents, maybe we strike the word working on that because that maybe couldn't imply that the people who come during the day aren't working or, I don't know. It's like, this is very petty word, but maybe just saying for, you know, parents can, you know, optional attendance.
Right, I, I don't know. I love your suggestions. I like that, you know, I just think it's like, I think part of it's like, hearing for me, I've not been involved, it's like more social. And it's like, I, that you can come and learn something and there's gonna be discussion and, I thought you.
Well, I think some of it was really to mirror what is being done during the daytime. It's not anything like, wow, and then you're not included in it. It's, it's really the attempt to say, and, 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 and to make that available to people who don't have, aren't able to come during the daytime. So, I'm just looking for more suggestions on what that can look like and how else we can communicate the information. Because I think there still is the challenge out there that people aren't aware of it. And I think, I think Parent Group has done a great job of putting the notes out on their website, putting it in Parent Group Updates, but I just don't know how else to get that information out there.
One way that we think a lot of people get information is through the lowest school newsletters. I think that lowest school families need the newsletter. And if, while we don't, while we, you know, want teachers to compare information for you, if you can give a flyer to probably Sarah or Dean or Morse's office, she can forward, and we can send it. Or you can put a small word in our newsletter, this is Morse's school family that we need to have stuff. And if a teacher is like endorsing it, please get out, are you ready to?
I also think that, to that, maybe at the next, I don't know if it was at the next board meeting, but I think we need some sort of evaluation with our parents to find out what it is they want. And, I mean, when you told me that, I mean, we've got five hundred families here, and we have twelve, how many active parent members are there? Twelve? You know, I mean, there's a disconnect that's happening, so we need to find out what it is. So can we just add the discussion of having a, some sort of evaluation or something?
I'm looking for a questionnaire for Parent Group?
Well, yeah, maybe making a broad, maybe making it for Parent Group, you know?
I think the challenge is that is, we've put that out there in different forms and different ways, and there isn't a response. You know, to be honest, families are very busy and in whatever way you're running, it just isn't.
I think it might be a good board retreat topic. Like, how do we get feedback from parents and from teachers and?
Like in general, yeah.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause, I mean, to piggyback on some of this earlier. Yeah, I mean, I'd love to improve the fields outside and put up lights and all the rest of it, but where's the money gonna come from? You know, what's the priority? And I think it wouldn't, it might help to do some sort of survey or questionnaire where we're getting, not just feedback on that question, but, you know, I mean, we don't have to go to Washington County, but I mean, they'll send out something every year and I'll say, you know, what do you think of libraries, what do you think of parks, and blah, blah, blah. And it's helpful to get the data and be able to see what people think is going well and where they think the next, you know, hundred thousand dollars should be expected.
So maybe a topic to add to the board retreat potential agenda item is a community-wide survey and we can discuss what that might look like and talk about if that's something we can flesh out in a board retreat or create a committee or something. I mean, I think that's an interesting concept. My, my experience with people being busy is exactly what Susan just said. I mean, the challenge is not that people aren't aware of the opportunity. The challenge is that everybody's choosing between sixteen different, interesting and worthwhile things that they're trying to do.
I know at one point, there was a survey that we got. I don't know who took the results of that. I know I filled one out. This is a number of years ago, and so I don't know how that looked.
I think the most recent one was about three years ago. So I think this has probably been a few years, it might be time to, do you, and we can, I think we can find the data and find the actual questions.
I was pretty sure it's in my monkey. We have a survey on monkey and the school has an account that we call, Carekind Monkey, that's.
I just have one more thing that I, I don't know if other people wanna bring up, but I just feel like it would be important to have another discussion about replication. And where, I mean, because I know we've been asked to replicate and we have results for an amazing school. I just feel like there are kids out there that need a school like this.
Exactly.
So.
Just last year, yeah, right?
Friends of education repeatedly, and it's a goal that they have for all of their high functioning and successful charter schools. And then, and please tell us about one of you, the commissioner of education was here for a very nice visit to honor the middle school as one of the top performing schools in the state. One of only fourteen schools to receive the honor five years ago. And.
And the only middle school.
And the only middle school in the state to receive the honor five years ago of a top performing school. And so she said, you know, what are you doing about replicating? And I think Nicole piped right in and said she was gonna do it individually.
Yeah. Something to be a hockey team.
And it's actually, it's a really important question.
I think, I think so. I think that we do need to talk about that.
So that's.
It's a lot of work.
Yes. So this is point ten on our, it's item ten on our little succession planning thing. Because while we've, you know, while we've got our founder, you know, here, if we're succession planning from inter, from within, what better time than to train some people?
I like the way you think, and that's a great retreat topic and probably deserves an entire retreat page. For Susan, I mean, seriously, it's probably a topic for me.
You might need to use survey monkey to decide what we're going to talk about in the retreat or.
Well, I think we need to, yeah, we need to narrow the focus to make it, it's a great. All right, anything else?
Is the retreat, are we thinking about two half-days or a full day? Just how much time do you think that we might?
I'm thinking, this is, we can have a conversation, but I'm thinking about a whole day. And I'm thinking about breaking it up, obviously, you know, maybe three and a half hours. And then, you know, a significant break in the three and a half hours, so.
A full day.
And you've done that in the distant past, where we spent an entire day as dedicated locations. It's a really different environment, obviously, to have a conversation. No, thanks, Jerry. I don't wanna shortchange Beth for Tom for whoever has the compensation.
Put that out there, that'll make information.
I saw the stack of stuff that was coming your way.
Yeah, you think you have boring.
Not boring, there's a lot of, yeah, good meeting on the third with Jim and John and picked up some of the tips that John had put together on, you know, thinking around compensation over the last few years, there's a lot, you know, online about charter school compensation. So I'm just kind of getting immersed in that and haven't put anything on eight and a half by eleven yet, but work on it.
It's a lot of reading.
I, I just wanna say this very succinctly. Thank you to each of you for willing to take on important strategic initiatives. And they are each in their own way crucial to our future success, so thank you. I have one last request, that we agree to add a vote on the indemnification agreements that we discussed in closed meeting and take that vote now in open meeting. It's a modification of the agenda, so I need a motion to modify the agenda to add the item.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I'm gonna step in from that, go.
Okay.
I also, it didn't mean two votes, right?
Yeah. And so, motion carries, and we're gonna add approval of the indemnification agreements for a vote to determine whether we approve indemnification agreements that we discussed in closed meeting earlier tonight. The first question is the indemnification agreement for period calls. And I will not make any other identifying statements. We had an excellent discussion earlier, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the indemnification agreement for period calls. And we'll have discussion after we have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second fight. All right, discussion on indemnification agreement for period calls. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone wish to abstain? Thank you, motion carries, and the indemnification agreement is approved. We have an indemnification agreement to vote on for Doug Meyer, John Krugel, Jeremy Winko. Looking for a motion to approve as discussed in the closed board meeting?
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the? Hearing none, looking for a yea or nay vote or abstention if you choose for the indemnification agreement as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you all, and I look forward to seeing everybody next month. And I thank everybody, especially the parents who've stayed until eight-ten. Thank you.
Good job.
Motion to adjourn, second?
So, second.
My opinion was they didn't attempt to do the method.
Yeah. Thank you.
You could also see. So I'm sure that that continues, that continues. Although, can I swerve also?
And the cast with this, totally, they gave us supplies and everything.
Have a good night. Right, right, and it is, I mean, absolutely. What's the activities are, and I, I believe personally I chose them to get involved in other places because my skills have been interesting and have been mainly accomplished in terms of what they need to do. So it's interesting. I know that there's several places that I, I was, hey, I'm about to meet, hey, I'm about to meet. And only daytime meetings are scheduled. That's totally fine, that I'll just.
You know what, I like, but I like you sharing that because I'm gonna tell you that is never a whole. I can't speak for a lot of people. But I like you sharing that because I'm gonna tell you that is never, I hope, I can't speak for a few.